Good evening and welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting of May 8, 2018. First up is a salute to the flag. Do we have an approval of the agenda?
Make a motion, will you approve the agenda?
No, second that.
All in favor. We will table the minutes of last meeting. Okay, today we have Jill Kramer from Burke &amp; Clegg regarding the changes in the marijuana law. And we currently have a ban, an ordinance coming up to ban it on June 2nd to vote on, but it sounds like the ordinance, the way it's written, is incorrect. It references the wrong document. So, we're going to have Jill fill us in as to what those changes were and why it's written incorrectly.
In our options.
In our options.
So, as many of you may know, the main legislature overrode the governor's veto last week and enacted a new marijuana legislation. It is entitled Adult Use Marijuana, Marijuana Legalization Act, and the statutory site for that is 28B MRS Sections 101 et cetera. That statute repealed, the statute that was written in Title VII, the statute that was currently on the books, that the town of Acton based its proposed ordinance on, its proposed ban. So, Title VII was, the Title VII section was repealed. We've got the new 28B section in, and it's basically a complete rework. And you'll probably also have heard that the statute did away with marijuana social clubs, and it did add another retail marijuana establishment called nurseries. There are also testing facilities allowed, and a lot of the same things that were in Title VII are still there. And the major changes, again, as you may have heard, to the new statute is that the new statute makes it clear that municipalities must opt in to allow any kind of retail marijuana establishment. Not just stores, but also cultivation facilities, testing facilities, nurseries, things like that. And the town could potentially vote to opt into one or all of them, or none of them. And if the town does nothing at all, they're automatically banned. They're not allowed in the municipality. And even if the town were to allow any kind of marijuana retail establishment that it enacted an ordinance allowing, the applicant also has to apply for, you know, a license or a permit. And if the town does nothing with it, the permit is deemed denied. So, there are several levels of protection built in there for the municipalities. Basically, you have to allow it, and then you have to extra allow it before anybody can do anything related to marijuana growth or sales in town, related to retail marijuana sales. There's a second component, too, that municipalities can weigh in on, and that is the home cultivation provisions. And that basically allows for any individual over the age of 21 to grow up to three adult plants, 12 immature plants, and any number of seedlings, either on a parcel of land where they're domiciled, on a parcel of land where they're not domiciled but they own, or on a parcel of land that is owned by somebody else to which they get written permission to grow there. The three adult plants goes with the individual. So, I can't have three plants on my land, and three plants on my land over here, and three plants on somebody else's land. It's only just three, or 12, or the seedlings, however the botany works out there. The way the statute is written, it allows for those three options, wherever you want to put your three plants. The municipalities get an extra say here, though. The municipality is allowed to limit where the plants go to the parcel on which the individual is domiciled. It would then disallow, well, I guess, however the ordinance was written, the town could allow it to be on your domicile parcel or on another parcel that you own, and not say on a third party's parcel on which you got written permission to grow. So, the ordinance as written, the proposed ordinance as written, is outdated, as I say. The statute that it references was repealed, and it would be unenforceable. And also, the sort of common understanding here is that it's more, a ban on marijuana retail establishments is unnecessary, because under the new statute, they're not allowed until they're specifically allowed. So, that's what I have to tell you about.
Okay, so, I think that Jerry and perhaps Mr. Nass would like to, I wanted to call you a J-word, Jerry and something, speak to that being on the Marijuana Committee.
Thank you for that. So, as I had sent you guys an email, from my perspective, we were warned by both Proster County, Washington, and Prowers County, Colorado, of these social, these community grows. Basically, the issue with them is, so this is the grow your own on somebody else's property with their permission. In essence, it becomes an unlicensed grow, right? So, you could potentially, if I decided to, I could start taking lists of names from different people, giving them permission to grow my land. I could grow it for them. They could pay me for my work. There's no, nothing in the legislation stops that. And in essence, we have an unregulated grow that the town could do nothing about effective today, right? So, from our perspective, we were warned about this. This is one of the key things the lobbyists were pushing for in Colorado and Washington. So far, they have kept that at bay. I do believe we need to act on that. We need to act on that pretty quickly. As far as the ban goes, I recognize from having read the law that, in fact, it's not necessary that we do the ban. However, I think it's to our advantage, given the work we've done, to have the town voice what they want. If the town decides that it wants a ban, then we're on record saying, as a town, this is what we want. There was a lot of conversation, as we went through the Marijuana Committee, as to, you know, the town voted, I think, if I remember correctly, roughly 60-40 or 56-44 in favor of legalizing. I think for a lot of people, that was to make sure that their kids weren't being criminalized for having possession as opposed to having a grow operation next to them. So, I think going on record makes a lot of sense with the town voting whether or not we want to ban commercial operations. And at the same time, I think we need to limit the personal grow to the domicile parcel kind of thing. So, there's no way to limit the number of plants on a parcel unless you limit it to the number of adults over 21 on that parcel. So, I've sent an email with language to that effect. The other thing to note that was different from the original legislation is that, as predicted, there is zero revenue, tax revenue, for the town. So, there's no benefit for the town. I think there was some talk early on of us having some property tax relief as a result of commercial operations, and that's, you know, purely outlawed at this point. So, other than that, that's everything. Any questions, or?
Lisa, can I add to that? Just add to something.
Yes.
From a clerk's standpoint, because I think this is going to be in a conversation that we have, one of the big questions to Jill and her team is, so, we have signed an order, the Board of Selectmen have signed an order calling for a secret ballot referendum. So, they have the question, and it's, the question cannot be changed. They probably can withdraw it, but I'm not 100% sure on that, and Jill hasn't had time to look into it. But more importantly, can they make a change that you guys have recommended regarding the amount of plants for the 21 years of age? Can that ordinance be amended to include that? And I think, and I could be wrong, the answer was no, because the question is, you know, shall an ordinance prohibiting a retail marijuana establishment and retail marijuana social clubs? So, even if the board supports putting this language in here, which I think that they would, can they change the ordinance at this point to include something that doesn't have anything to do with the retail establishments and retail marijuana? That's going to be the question.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So, I just want to make sure it's clear, it's not that the board does or doesn't support it. I'm not sure it can be added at this point.
So, my short answer to that would be, if, from a recommendation perspective.
It could.
I would yank, if it can't be done, I'd yank the whole thing and schedule one for as soon as possible, make sure that the moratorium at least covers on the retail side, you know, until that's taken care of. But we need to act immediately on the community growing. You know, this is an unintended loop, well, I think it's a loophole that many people didn't realize was there. I think it's a very intentional loophole, but not one that would benefit us. And that goes back to, you know, the interviews with the Spokane Clean Air Region Agency where we're asking about what kind of setbacks for marijuana would manage the odor? And the answer was, there isn't one. We had the incident with the propane leak on, I think it was on Dennis Lane. They smelled it down at the school. It took them, I think, several hours to find where that was. That's a volatile organic compound like the fumes from, you know, an adult marijuana plant. If we get an unlicensed, unregistered grow in this area outdoors, I mean, the committee recommended not allowing outdoor grows, period, unless they're in purpose-built buildings with proper filtration and so on. Under this current law, we've got a problem. So, my recommendation would be pull it out and get it scheduled immediately for a secret ballot.
So, that makes sense, too, that it might not be able to put into the current one the way the question's worded.
Right. And rather than have people try and vote twice, I'd have them vote once.
And I think that Jill will look into that for us over the next couple of days.
I will.
I just noticed Carol. She wanted to speak. Was anybody else I missed?
Thanks.
My glasses on.
So, I'm Richard Nass. And different from most appearances here, I am not speaking for the committee, because the committee has not met the Marijuana Committee. Just a couple of reminders. One, again, all of the towns around us have a ban on recreational marijuana activity. So, again, without this vote, and I'm going to be lobbying to continue to vote this, whether the citations are correct or not, I think we ought to go ahead and do it. The other thing that strikes, in addition to everybody around, so we're now different than everybody else, okay? So, now we've become a target for everybody that's figured out some kind of loophole. And I think the other message that I gained from all of the work, don't forget, our report was given to you in January. If you look on page three, there it is, community grows, basically. We were warned by the state of Washington and Colorado about several things. One, there is a huge amount of activity trying to look for loopholes in this stuff, even in the states that have had it for three or four years. And there it is in black and white, exactly what now appears in our legislation, allowing somebody to grow marijuana, even in a small amount, on somebody else's land with just written permission. How that ever got there, there was no public discussion of this thing that I'm aware of. The press basically jumps around the top stuff, doesn't deal with any of the details. We, all of a sudden, on Wednesday, Governor vetoes this thing. We have 82 pages in the bill. That's what, in its entirety. We had the benefit of the PowerPoint presentation that was given to the legislators a few days before that. That's 18 pages. But there's a huge amount of detail here and a huge amount of change. And so, I guess I'm worried that we now have an opportunity to make a statement, whether it's incorrect or not, and I understand the lawyer's position on this. I think we ought to go ahead with it. The other thing that strikes me is, what is the purpose of a public hearing? I think that generally, it does not happen that there are changes to the proposal after a public hearing. If the work is done properly, and the proposal's out there, people get a chance to comment. But it's rare that changes are made, I think usually, after or as a result of the public hearing. I'm not sure, and again, the lawyers will weigh in on this, I'm not sure why this shouldn't be a normal public hearing. Changes can be made. I'm not sure where the timeframe is on this.
Well, I think that, I mean, I think that it's, so, the order that, according to the law, that calling for a secret ballot referendum either has to happen by petition or by order of this Board of Selectmen. And they have placed an order, which is required 45 days before the election, by municipal, ordered by municipal officers. It can be found in Section 2528, telling, indicating to the clerk, you are, you know, place this question on the next election, okay? So, that question has been written.
Yeah.
Shall an ordinance prohibiting retail marijuana establishments and retail marijuana social clubs in the town be adopted? There's no question, I don't think in my mind, that you could make minor changes to the ordinance, as long as they are prevalent to the retail marijuana establishments and retail marijuana social clubs. Because as I told the board and Jill, although we have not advertised this ordinance anywhere, and you were one that inquired about it, people have come in off the street and said, can I see the ordinance?
Yeah.
So, I agree that I think she'll find that you can make minor changes to the ordinance, but they have to be relevant to the question that's already been, you know what I mean? That's my only concern, that might be gray.
Yeah.
And again, I don't think it comes down to the board supporting the cultivation, because I think they will support what Jerry's saying, but I'm not sure that's going to be allowed to go in that ordinance with that title. That's what I'm concerned about.
Okay. And that's a valid discussion.
Right.
I think it is. Possibly, it's relevant.
Home cultivation is relevant to the retail establishments.
It's part of the same, it's part of LD 1719.
And possibly, because she's the final word, so.
I don't know. That's a good question.
Yeah. That's why we have her.
Yep. So, I guess I'll end with that, now somebody has any questions. I mean, I just think we ought to go ahead with this if we can. I'm not sure what your ability to pull it is. What is, having ordered this thing and having produced it, your ability now to say, let's not do it?
Well, they, I think that they will, and that's something we've asked Jill to.
Isn't that not equal with changing it?
Well, not necessarily.
Changing it by eliminating it.
They can pull it and cancel it, but making a change, but we'll let her weigh on that. What I'm going to recommend to the board is that they announce and publicly schedule a meeting for Friday at 4:00 or 5:00, whenever's good for you, because we need to have, Jill has to have a chance to get those answers. But at the same time, absentee ballots by law have to go out on June 12th, which means I need to know what your decision's going to be.
Not June 12th, June, May 12th.
May 12th, excuse me, May 12th. So, we'll be making absentee ballots Friday night. But I trust that you want to hear these answers from her first, that this cultivation can even go in there, take the recommendation, assuming you support it. But I don't think anybody can do anything until she has a chance to look into it. So, the only way around that and to meet the absentees is to schedule a meeting for Friday, three days' notice by law, and let her get back to us before then and come back together. I mean, I don't know how else they're going to solve it.
Great. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I add one more thing?
Sure.
The question of whether this is personal, it's certainly under the chapter of personal use, absolutely. But when you look at the intent of it, the concept of a community grow, more akin to a retail cultivation. So, if we can sneak it in under that.
I was thinking that, too, because somebody's making money off of it by, you know, allowing somebody else to grow for them, probably not for free.
Exactly. And that's just ripe with all kinds of abuse, which, again, was why we were warned. We didn't mention it in the ordinance, the recommendation, because it wasn't legal under the law at the time we did that. So, for what it's worth.
And worst case is that you make the adjustments, and we have another election. Hopefully, decide what she says.
Any other Marijuana Committee members out there that would like to speak? I don't see anybody. So, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I touch base with me tomorrow, Jill, if there's anything else you need from us. I think you have most of your documents.
Yes, yes, and I will do my best to get any as quickly as I can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Department Head Committee Chair updates. Forest Conserv-
Am I scheduling a meeting for Friday, or?
Yes, schedule a meeting for Friday at 4:00, please.
4:00? Can you do 4:00 on Friday?
Yeah, my mom.
Love to do 4:00 on Friday. Then we can all stay together and make ballots after, except for Ed.
Do it early Friday if you want.
It's up to you. It has to be three days, so, no. I would say we will be pushing it with 4:00. It's 5:30 now, so 4:00. And we'll notify the press so it meets the emergency meetings as well for Warren Fines.
Okay, we have Forest Conservation Hebo-Hibo.
Is Lois, oh, good, Lois is here.
So, I spoke to Carl Davis today, and I asked, a couple times, actually, and I asked him to come in. Ms. Mishu has had some concerns that she's brought before you guys under public comment for the last couple of weeks. So, hoping that we can hear the portions that he has and then decide, you know, if the board wants to bring joint meetings together, or how you want to do it.
Just a little update on the Hebo-Hibo project. We did send out a survey letter, and I'll give you the update on that. We got eight letters back, and we had three phone calls in response to the survey. Three of the letters didn't want any use in terms of a recreational trail. Five of those letters would like more information. Phone calls, one person was in favor, and two wanted more information. Our plan at this point would be to, probably sometime in the next couple of months, try to hold a meeting with the landowners and get ideas from them as to what their thoughts are, and quite if you want more information. So, that would be our next step in this. As I say, this is only an idea at this point. We're trying to see what butters think and work from there.
So, we have questions on the Hebo-Hibo, or do we want to allow Lois, she brought it up? Generally, you've allowed them to rebut if they had any additional questions.
If Lois has any questions, it sounds like you're just still in the research phase of seeing what the landowners would like, and, yeah.
Right. Yep.
Hi, thanks for letting me come back. The only thing I want to keep clear on this is that anything that changes, anything upgrades, I'd like to be informed about it, and I'd also would like information on it. In other words, whatever he shares, or whatever they share, Freedom of Information Act, I'd like to have also, so I can present it to the people that have Maple Grove, because actually, they're going to, we're going to be meeting here probably sometime in June, and I'm going to have to share this information amongst them, because a lot of them do live on the Hebo. And they're going to be interested in what's going on, so.
So, are they, they're part of the people who were asking for?
Some of them, yes.
And I think that Mr. Davis said clearly that his next step is to reach out to everybody in Hebo-Hibo, and imagine he's going to reach out to them all together and treat them all the same, so that you'll handle her request, because we don't have anything that we haven't turned over.
I know. That's why I wanted to make sure. And the other thing is, if you decide to meet with all of us, I'd like a two weeks' notice, please. I don't want to be noticed 24 hours ahead. I've been asked to come to a couple of meetings, and they only give me 24 hours, and sometimes that's tough.
Okay.
Next item is the cemetery on the Hobbs Farm in Acton. I have a, you have a copy of a letter from the land trust?
Yeah.
Do you want to read that aloud for the record?
Yeah. Or do you want me to read it? You can.
I don't have a copy. Okay, this is cemetery abutting the Hobbs Farm. Three Rivers Land Trust has been notified by Town Administrator Jennifer Rue that Three Rivers Land Trust in 2014 agreed to be assigned by the Acton Selectmen as caretaker of the cemetery abutting Hobbs Farm. Unfortunately, the person who wanted to take responsibility for that cemetery is no longer an active member of the land trust or a year-round resident of Acton. Because the land trust finds itself in the unfortunate position of not having the personnel to execute the responsibility and wishes to be relieved of it, we are hereby requesting the Selectmen to reassign the responsibility of the cemetery's care to the Town Cemetery Committee. The land trust remains fully committed to stewarding the farm itself and the farm property abutting the cemetery. Any property outside the cemetery walls will therefore continue to be the responsibility of the land trust.
So, included in your packet, you have that letter, and Lois, have you referenced it? I've got a couple extras, if anybody else wants one. There is an agreement that was signed on September 11th of 2014. The Board of Selectmen signed, basically pertaining to the maintenance of the family cemetery. Saying that, and I guess when I saw this originally, and I don't know what you guys think of when you see it, so, it's basically, whereas the family cemetery on Fox's Ridge has not been maintained for a number of years, whereas the stones are needing repair, whereas the area enclosed should be cared for, whereas the Selectmen of Acton pursuant to have the legal authority to appoint, and basically, the board appointed Three Rivers to care for this. When Carl came in today, we did pull that statute, 13MRS A, Section 13171, and I attached that for your review as well. Shows you the authority that the Selectmen had to appoint it to someone. And then, of course, you've got Three Rivers here asking you to appoint it to someone else.
So, where this is, if we were to appoint the Cemetery Committee, and it would take further funds to care for this, it doesn't have to go to town meeting?
Well, I mean, they, the cemetery fund can only expend what they have. I mean, so, I don't know where they are with their accounts. I don't know what it would take to maintain it. I mean, I, you know, you don't, I don't believe, and we could certainly get an opinion, I don't believe it would have to, I mean, this was a policy that was signed by the Selectmen. This isn't something that, I didn't find anything in the statute that referenced a town vote to, you know, appoint someone to be in charge of a cemetery, but, I mean, the monies that has to be allocated by town meeting, it would depend on where they're at. I mean, I doubt they've budgeted for it, but I don't know the extent of the stones.
And currently, the town pays for the flags and the flag holders.
Yeah, and I think that the Cemetery Committee put the flags on there. You put the flags on the sites, yeah. Carl, she wants to jump in there.
It's actually beyond that. We've done the, we've actually done the flags, the holding on. You guys got to realize, it goes beyond that. We have to maintain and take care of what we can and what we can do. A lot of families in town take care of their own. We don't, how we do is bring the flags out, and they take care of it. They might ask our advice and what's going on, and so on and so forth. When Three Rivers took over this cemetery, it's their responsibility. Per stone that's out there, if anything's damaged and so on and so forth, it's $1,000 per stone. We have not budgeted for any of that. All I did was take an even maintenance and look at it. I didn't take any, didn't take anything to look at, so on and so forth. But the outside where the stones are, the south, the stone wall, it used to be fenced in, by law is supposed to be fenced in, supposed to be a quarter acre, and stuff like that. We, right now, we don't have that type of money, and you have to go before the town in order to get that type of money. I mean, I wanted to double up my budget as it was, just to maintain what we've got, never mind what we have to add on to.
Did you guys maintain it? I'm sorry. Did you maintain it before 2014, before this agreement was signed?
We always took care of most of what we could.
It sounds to me like they don't, it's not on their land at Buttsit.
No, it's on the property.
It says it at Buttsit.
When we took the property over, you had a tough time walking through that cemetery. And we did do a lot of work on it, and did, but, as I said, the person who was in charge, who was going to steward that property is not, and we're limited on the amount of volunteer labor we can get.
Well, I'm well-limited also. I mean, I had to fight and get three shopy volunteers to come over to help with Acton. So, I mean, we're not, we're not struck out on all the volunteering either. I mean, there's not a lot of room and place for volunteers. I'm glad to take on more and more, and the more that come out, I'm more than happy to take. And I imagine he feels the same way, we can find them.
Well, I would.
We just can't find them.
Shouldn't we keep this? Why did they give it to you in the first place? I mean, why didn't they keep it with, or was it somebody asked?
Somebody asked.
Somebody asked, somebody on.
And that person was going to.
Right.
Did do that. They did clean it up.
Until, okay.
Let me ask you this, Lois. Do we have any cemeteries in town that have any broken stones?
Several.
Several. So, taking this one on and not being able to replace the stone the first year would not be different than a lot of other cemeteries?
It wouldn't be different, but my biggest thing is, each cemetery we go to, the first priority is always a veteran's stone. We've got to make sure the veteran's stone is back together and back where it's supposed to be, and that it's the way it's supposed to be. Because back when we did Civil Wars and all that, they didn't get their discount, they didn't get their forms, they call it, what do they call those, DDS? You guys, they were in the service?
Yeah, 4011.
There you go. We didn't get those for them. So, we're actually responsible as a township to make sure they have those, because they don't have them. Anything after that, we can, the government will somewhat help. They won't always help, they'll somewhat help. But you've got to prove that they were in the service, you've got to do a lot, and they don't do genealogy. That's the one thing they don't do. If you can't prove it, they don't, it doesn't, it doesn't go beyond that. And we put out over 300 flags in a whack, so that tells you there's over 300 veterans just here in town, not including Maple Grove. And every time there's a broken stone, from what I've experienced at Maple Grove especially, it's $1,000. And you've got, and you've got, and I've been trying to get three, because remember last year, you asked me about getting three people in to get me a quote? I can't even get one person up here to give me a quote, never mind to go someplace else. I have to actually call them, tell them what I'm looking for, they won't come up here and quote me, and I've called as far, and I told you guys, I called as far as Portland and Portsmouth, and I still can't, and Conway. I still can't get anybody to come down here to give me a quote. And the only reason I know it's that much is because in a budding town to us, when he has his stones done, he takes them to another area. Sometimes he pays for them out of his own pocket, and sometimes the family helps pay for them, and then sometimes the historical society helps pay for them. It really depends, but it's fast at $1,000.
So what do you want to do? Who do you want to handle this?
Well, it sounds to me that the cemetery committee cared for, or, you know, I don't know if you cared for it before that, but it doesn't sound like Three Rivers Land Trust owns the actual property of the cemetery. They just offered to take care of it because it abutted.
My, my opinion to that is...
So they have no...
Because they, 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 that, that is part of Hobbs's field. It always has been part of Hobbs's field. Long before any of you guys were here, it was Hobbs's Fields, and that's always been part of it.
If your decision is being based on that, it's certainly something we can find out for next week and, you know, and, and put it back on there. But do you don't believe, Carl, that these are on Hobbs property, Hobbs Farm?
Well, I know that the research was done, that you had to go and check all the past heirs, you know, that are buried there, or, I mean, the folks buried there, check with their heirs, if you can find anybody.
They're around.
And...
They're around. Trust me. They're here.
Well, we did anyway. We didn't find any heir that wanted to take care of that cemetery.
Okay.
We didn't find anybody.
No, and that's a lot of the problem, is that they won't step up because of the cost on it.
But do you believe that it's on the Hobbs Farm property, that Three Rivers owns?
I don't know the law.
So let, I mean, are you okay with that? It sounds like we kind of need to know that.
Don't we already take care of, don't you already take care of other cemeteries that are on people's, like, property and stuff?
Not all. A lot of them decide they want to take care of their own.
But if not, but if, if they don't want to take care of them, you are taking them.
They actually help. They actually help us. We have gotten help. Matter of fact, if you go over here to, to where the post office road runs around, we actually have an heir on that side. They come out and help us. We cleaned up a little bit of the area. They asked us what to do at this point. We have a, we have a bracket cemetery over on Orchard Road, that the guy who owns the property has actually asked us, once we've helped out, and may helped him get it up to par, if it's possible that, you know, how to keep it that way, not to just let it go back to where it is. Our biggest problem in the future is going to be all the, the trees and, trees and, I mean, we got trees that are up the foot. There's so many trees you would not believe. My only fear is the first time one of them crashes, and I don't care if it's on their property. We've talked to several people who have them. They'd like to get out and make, and get them off there. Problem is, they gotta figure out how to get somebody out there to get them out.
That's the same way with our cemetery. We've got big old rock maples, and I mean, that's just the way it is. I mean...
But that's, that, that causes damage and stuff like that.
It does. Yep. Well, maybe we should figure out...
I mean, I guess the question is, is it's, whose property is it actually on?
Either way, I think we're gonna have to appoint new caretakers.
Right. Does the, does the board have the authority to?
Yeah.
And my biggest thing is, is my understanding is, is that in order for you to make us take it, we've gotta actually put it on, take it over. In other words, it'd be no different than if I came before you guys and said, I have to take, I have, I want you guys to take over Maple Grove. I have to go about a procedure to get there. It's the same procedure. It's not just a thrown-in type of deal. This is a little law. The book I have is about this thick, because it talks about all the laws.
That's why I asked, do we have to, take, this is a town meeting question, to take on?
We're gonna need to...
Why don't we try to figure it out?
Let's table it for a week. I mean, this statue that talks about, I mean, this particular statue that talks about the approval for repair, maintenance, and removal, prior authorization, the condition, who has the right to pass along. I mean, there certainly could be another one, but let's, let's find out for sure. We'll send it to May Municipal and ask them.
Thank you.
Yeah, just to speak to the land trust, I don't think it's realistic for the land trust to take on that responsibility. I mean, in the future, we don't know who our board members are. We don't, you know, at least with a cemetery committee, you have somebody that lives in town for sure, always, whereas with Three Rivers, that's an unknown, to look at it long-term.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
And thank you, Lois, for caring.
My problem is, like I said, we're limited on people also.
Okay, next up, we are going a little bit off of the agenda to present to the Southern Maine Veterans Memorial Cemetery Association their check for half a year. This is, there, there are 501(c)(3) that we donate to each year, and this is half of the check that they get after the April taxes are received.
Can I have a shout-out?
Oh, sure.
Yeah. Thank you. I'm the chairman of the association, but I'm proud to be here and getting funds from the town. I just wanted to mention to you some things that are happening. We have four major things that projects we're working on, and one, because of the lemonade kids, we're definitely working on the memorial walkway. But we have Memorial Day coming up, the, at 1:00 on the Monday, Memorial Day, at the committal shelter, which we'd be glad to have you all there. I believe you got a letter from the secretary. Then what we're having is the POW/MIA memorial. They're going to be placing the tablet for the Vietnam War veterans at that time, because this is the 50th anniversary of the Vietnam War, so they want to get that in. And then people will see, well, this is, this is the picture, and that's where we started, so you'll understand what it's gonna be when it's done. But the last thing that I really would love to have you be at, and everybody, is hopefully the only place to be in the state, on Veterans Day, which is the 100th anniversary of the end of World War I, which is Armistice Day. So we're not gonna celebrate Veterans Day. We're gonna celebrate Armistice Day at the World War I memorial that we're building right now. We have two crosses and a Star of David. That is exactly what is in Europe, and we've got the design, and we're having it made. And so there's gonna be a beautiful little area. Right as you come in, you'll see where the land behind the burial areas comes out. Right there's gonna be all red, and, and at the time of Memorial Day, there'll be poppies. And when they're not poppies, there'll be something else that the school, we have, the, the Sanford School System has been working on this, all the pieces and everything. And so those are three things that I really hope that you'll come there and, and be there for those events. And everybody else also. And thank you very much for, for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you later.
Okay.
Bye-bye.
Okay, we have the road committee up next.
Cindy Hart, road committee. I guess I need to ask you, I'm here to talk about RSMs tonight, apparently, and you've been meeting today and have further information, so I think you should fill us in first.
So I had called Dawn, who's running the class, to figure out how, how the program is situated on the town server, so that it can't get lost, or how it could be possibly shared with somebody, the road committee, without giving up all the information. And so he was, that's what I was waiting to hear back from. Also, we needed to retrace our steps in regards to the road committee voting on have it, holding the class. It kind of all came up so quickly. I do recall that road committee meeting, that we, there was a vote, and it was passed to have it, and we were gonna originally have it in the fall, and our question was, why did we move it to May again?
Because we were able to, and we thought it might be better for you with the budget process.
Okay.
It's a lot easier to plan your money if you know where it's gonna go.
Okay.
And, and we figured we might have a very short interval of time where, before Kim got going on her blueberries, we would be able to do it.
Oh, yeah. Okay. What were some of the other questions we had?
When we had first talked, you, you know, I was asked if I would help out and commit, and I said yes, and I was thinking, you had mentioned the data entry. But then we had talked, and then you had said, instead of that, you wanted me to do, what do you want me to do? Was it the measuring?
Well, there are four people involved.
Can you kind of explain all this, and...
Yeah, I'll explain. The way it's, four individuals, and they must be the same four, because you have to have the same eye on these roads. And one person is driving, one person is recording. There are two people, that's you and I, Kim, because it's exercise. We are stopping at periodic places, getting out of the car and measuring the width of the road, and then jumping back in. We'll have vests on. We, we do this, and, and we've done it before, when school was in session, starting after the buses were finished, working for a few hours, and before they came out, so that we weren't having too much traffic. And you still have to be very careful doing it, because you are in the road and dragging a tape measure across it. Once you have all this information in your computers, we want a backup. The road committee wants a backup. It's a tremendous time commitment for anyone that does this, and, you know, without getting into the past history, we have a very good computer person that's willing and to do the recording, and I'm sure that he can work with, with the DOT to figure out so that we can both have copies and we have a backup, so that we never go through this loss again.
Yeah, he said that it would essentially go on a live database that you could put on a flash drive, and then make copies of the flash drive, however many you needed. But when you do have an update to it, once the survey's done, it's done, but if you were to update it, whether the road's worked on it, you go into that one live database, update it, and then recopy it onto the road committee's flash drive, so that, you know what I'm saying? Only one, one of them gets updated. Yeah.
That's why we have a computer expert helping us.
What else was there?
Now, we had been tentatively scheduled for the 15th, and if this isn't working, if this isn't gonna work, I'd, I'd like to know now, because, you know, quite a few people are involved here, and to try to get them all in one place at one time can be confusing.
Can you just go over real quick? You had mentioned, you thought it should be maintained downstairs, and I didn't quite get why.
Well, because this is mapping, and this will be able to go on to our maps downstairs.
He made it some, okay, not trio. He hasn't happened to do a trio. I don't know that it could.
Apparently, it can be incorporated into what we already have, and it could be advanced. They're, they're currently working on a program that will, and this is a DOT, that will add, augment this, and bring in all your culverts. That's your water flow coming through. Other additions will be able to be made to it in the future. Chuck may have ideas, as you saw what he did with what we had already, and was able to break down the roads. He may have better ideas. We're all gonna know better after we have the meeting, and he's down here, explains it all to our Chuck, who's going to do it, and, and ask him the questions. I wish I, I can't help you with computers.
Okay. Well, to me, okay, so I'm in favor of the class. I love the idea of the record-keeping. I like the idea of it producing reports on what they, the computer thinks should be worked on next, and making a budget plan. But I do, I don't think it should go downstairs. I think they're too busy right now. Maybe in the future, but in, in the initial stages, I think it needs to stay upstairs until we get it figured out.
You're gonna probably have anything on it initially, other than the whole, other than what we put together. You're not gonna be adding anything to it. And then let's see, let's go from there. Let's have a road committee meeting, and, and see where it will work best. That's, that's what we're trying to do.
It sounds like you can produce quite a few reports from it that will be beneficial to road committee projects, or road commissioner projects.
Sure.
Tell me, just so I can understand the whole, the process. So as far as where the computer, where the item's gonna be downloaded, how it's gonna get backed up to the server, because it doesn't sound like the tech...
This is something that you need to be involved in.
Well, it needs to have, we need to all be involved with, with, next week, we need to all be together. It doesn't meet, work for us to meet separately. I would have liked to have been included today when you got into that conversation. And, but I mean, as we meet on this, we've got to be all on the same page.
So before you schedule the class, where, so where is the, the program now? Is it on a CD-ROM? Is it something you're downloading from a cloud? The town of Acton sent the money in. I did change the contact information. We don't know where the program is. Where is the...
Oh, it isn't here yet, because when we spoke, I believe, I spoke, you and I spoke at least, and that it was better to have it downloaded when everybody was here.
So where is it being downloaded specifically?
It's gonna have to be here.
Well, right here, where? Like on a town computer that's tied to the server?
It has to be on a town.
So the laptops, laptops are not tied to the server?
No, they're gonna be on the road in the car gathering the data, then that will come back here and plug into your computer.
So where is the program, the original program, gonna be downloaded?
I think it's, it should be originally downloaded to a town computer server.
To a, okay, so to a computer tied to the server.
And then, I think you just use that flash, a flash drive to then take it out to the laptop.
They're gonna make a copy of that same program and put it on a laptop?
Go do our work.
The town laptop.
And then the thumb drive?
Can then be copied to a road committee laptop.
So how is it getting on the server?
You plug that back into the computer, and it...
So it's, but I thought you said it wasn't on iCloud base?
Wouldn't it be on the, uh...
Well, I mean, I don't know. I haven't been involved in any, I don't know anything about it.
You're welcome to call Dawn tomorrow, I gave you the contact information, but he made it sound like it goes back and forth on the flash drive.
I mean, Cindy, my, my only thing is, I mean, it's my job to make sure that the, you know, I mean, town funds spent on town items, you know what I mean, that we have a backup. I mean, you keep referring to what happened back, you know, so many years ago. I don't want to see that happen any more than anybody else, but if, if the town isn't involved in it in the sense that we know where it's, where it's downloaded, we know who, where it's backed up, and, and just for the record, all the cartographic layers, I deal with all of those. It's not code enforcement. They don't, you know, I mean, for some reason, I just feel like the road committee doesn't want...
Well, I feel like we're piling more and more on upstairs. You guys always have a problem too with turnover, with, with turnover of personnel. I thought downstairs was a more stable environment. If not, fine. I mean, the planning board's forever, we all know that. But the, the best thing is to wait until the, the people that can answer the questions, the best are here.
At this point, we don't know who's gonna sit through the training, if we don't know who's gonna be handling it. If we don't know what the...
Would you like, it's...
You should be at the training.
Anybody that feels that they have to be involved in it, or, or want to be involved, should sit through the training. Anyone that's gonna be doing work on these roads should sit through the training and understand what we're looking at when we make these notations, and the maps are finally made. Anyone should be here that could be in any way involved, and get the questions answered by the people that can answer them far better than I.
So the class is a week from today. When, I mean, when was it scheduled? Are we advertising that it's open to anybody? Tuesdays, if I'm in charge of overseeing the, the information on the town server, I mean, Tuesdays are the worst possible day for me. I mean, when did, you know...
This was the day, this has been going on for a long time. I'm sorry you don't...
So this has been scheduled?
I'm sorry that you don't feel that you've been included, because we discussed it, and, and it involved the fact that first, we were having a problem with, trying to schedule with the other people.
It's not a matter of being involved. You're missing the point. So I'll, whatever direction the board gives me, we will...
Can we do it on a Wednesday?
And that's, what's the best day for you?
Any day but Tuesday. I mean, that's just, you know, I mean, our office is...
Can you speak with him, the one that does it?
Well, yes, I can. But, but you know, this, it's, it's hard to work when you guys keep changing, keep changing things on us. And with the private road committee too.
Did I just miss that?
We were, we were tentatively booked on the 15th.
It was a wild goal. It was a tentative.
So you've had it booked.
And the reason, and the reason that we've waited is because the person that's going to basically run it is not here, and is probably coming back today.
So then maybe it wouldn't be that big of a deal if we tried to, you know, get it on a Wednesday, even if it would be at the 15th, but the 16th?
It doesn't matter. Frankly, to me, I'll organize it whenever you think that you can be there.
I mean, if we can go back to selectmen minutes, and you guys agree to the 15th, and schedule for the 15th, and we'll...
Well, this is when he can do it. This is when everybody else thought they were going to do it. I'm sorry you feel excluded.
I'm not feeling excluded. You're missing what I'm saying.
I think we did think that we should, you know...
The board didn't set that date. Is that accurate?
I believe we did, because we all discussed when it would have to be.
I think we did.
Yes, we did. We did discuss it.
What's it gonna do when Ed's not here? We'll start with that.
We did discuss it.
She has it scheduled, and you want to do it on the 15th, so be it. But I, I mean, I want direct instruction from the board, and I'm sorry, in writing, on how this is gonna work, because, you know, the, there was a reason that it got last time.
I honestly don't feel like I know how it's gonna work until I sit through the class.
There's a reason that it got last, because, lost last time, because the town wasn't included. You know what I mean?
Then you need to, then you need to be included. It needs to be on a Wednesday, and that's what we need to do. We weren't thinking when we, you know, did this. I think it was just you and I were kind of saying, yeah, that works good.
I suggest that all of you get together and set a date, and get back to me, and I'll see what I can do with everybody else. But if there isn't a commitment from this...
I'll talk to Dawn.
If there isn't a commitment from this board to support this program...
Now, I don't think that's the case at all. I think the board is...
How, I would like you to finish, please. If there isn't a commitment with this board to... If there isn't a commitment with this board to go along with this program, there's no point in doing it in the first place. So you guys make sure that you know this is what you want to do before we go out and spend hours and hours again.
Yeah.
This, the point of this is to save us money so we don't have projects like you and I discussed last night.
And, I mean, and I, my, my thought to that is, I mean, there, you have to understand my, my point for, for a second, Cindy. They're coming to me saying, how is this going to be backed up? How is this going to happen? All the computer IT parts of it that I'm responsible for. So if it's my job to make sure that, that it's backed up and that in six years, you know, they can pull these reports and that all this happens, I need to at least know something about the, the program. Now, if you guys, honestly, if you committed to this date in a prior meeting and we just missed it, schedule it for Tuesday. I'll adjust my schedule and we'll make it happen. It sounds like she's already had it pre-planned. It's not a matter that the board doesn't support it because they do 100% or they wouldn't move forward. They just want to make sure, like you continue to say, we don't want this information to get lost again. And the only way we can make sure that doesn't happen is that the person that's in charge of your IT in the, in the town, which, you know, turnover or not, I've been in the position for 13 years, it's, we need to make sure it's stable and on our server. And we can't do that if I don't know anything about the program. I mean, that's, that's all I can, I mean, that's all it is.
I don't think also that you'll have to sit through the entire training. It's going to be here.
Right.
And you're not going to want to sit through the road survey part of it, but just the computer piece of it.
And like I said, whatever the board decides, you give me the direction and I will follow.
Well, I think we have two very good qualified computer people that can help you and will be, and will be on tap for you.
But they don't have access to the town server. It's personal information. We have drug testing. We have, we have information on that server that we can't.
Jennifer, I'm sure these people are professional and will do a very good job for you. Nobody's trying to make your job any harder.
You're missing that and you're turning it into something it's not. So, but, but nevertheless.
Well, no, nobody wants to make your job any harder. I know you've done a lot.
It's not that, Cindy, it's not that at all.
I can call Dawn tomorrow and find out if Wednesday, wait, does Wednesday work for the four people that we're going to do the ride?
If she's scheduled for Tuesday, just leave it, Elise.
Well, I have no idea. I, I have no idea.
But when it crashes, I don't want anything to do with it.
This was, this was set for everybody else, but why don't you guys just make up your mind? It, it makes it a lot easier.
Well, we've, we've made up our mind. We want to do this, but I don't think we thought about the fact that we would have to get it all set up here. That's not something that any of us do. It's something that she does. So we need her to be at this class. We don't know what this class is teaching us. So, I mean, that's all.
I'm pretty sure we're going to be, we'll be capable, you know?
I think you'll be capable.
Keep it for Tuesday. It's, I think it's very clear what we got, what we have. Leave it for Tuesday on the 15th. She's had it scheduled. It's all predetermined. There's enough calls that go on after and during the night. Just leave it the way it is and you guys can handle it and just give me whatever destruction, instruction you have.
If, if there are any problems, Jennifer, these people.
I'm sure there won't be any problems, Cindy.
These people are right here to help you.
Absolutely.
Oh, good. Are we, anything else here?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So do you want me to call Dawn and see if Wednesday works better or do you want to stick with Tuesday?
Either way, I mean, the Road Committee's doing their thing unfortunately again, so if it's better, I'd rather make it better for Jennifer if she can do Tuesday.
So would I, just because.
I mean, do Wednesday, that would be better.
And I'm telling you that if she already has it scheduled, if we go back to the minutes and she's clearly said this is 15.
We don't need to do that.
I'm not looking to change what she's scheduled.
No, we don't need to do that.
I mean, if she's, if it was scheduled on the 15th, then I'll adjust my schedule. I'm just saying, I need direction from you. I can't back a pro, I can't do the computer piece of it if I don't know anything about the program.
You need, you need to be the key computer person in this because you're the one that's going to have to retrieve the information. We can't have anyone else come in here.
And I wasn't involved in it the first time around at all.
Yeah, I'm sure there's great people, but those great people cannot access what you can access in that computer system.
Noon.
It's like noon to three, right?
I think he said three hours, depending on how intense we wanted to do the surveys.
Noon to three.
Okay.
Okay. Flat Ground Road.
So survey letters, the date has come and gone. There were 32 property owners on Flat Ground Road. We got 23 survey. You all set, Cindy, or you want to share that? We got 32 property owners. 23 survey letters came back. 23 were positive, nine were not returned. That's all I have and they're all in this folder so you can review them. So just assuming the direction on the warrant article.
I'm assuming then, why would we not get any return? They just maybe.
I have nine people that just chose.
Silence is acceptance.
I, I don't know. I can't speak for those nine.
And they was, were they certified?
No. But we had two come back that were bad addresses. We tracked them down and found new. There's comments on a couple of them. For the most part, they just checked the yes box and, and then you have the email that you got from Mr. Long as well, Michael Long for clarification, that I know he had concerns with Flat Ground Road.
Ron Long?
Oh, Ron, sorry.
That's okay.
That's right, we were supposed to do a drive.
Yep, and we need to.
Did you do a drive?
There's lots of them.
So I guess the only question is, are, do those results tell you that you want to change the warrant at all? Or are you going to leave it on there for the voters to vote?
I would say leave it on if 23 said yes.
Yes. I mean, we didn't get any no's, I mean, so.
Other than Ron, I couldn't quite take out.
I don't know if he meant, I think it was just the, yeah, he kind of gave us the history and where he thought the, where they used to plow to versus going all the way down to the river. So.
I'll have a copy of his email.
I don't either, but, so I think we should move forward.
Yep, I agree.
Hi.
I, I just want to say thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yep, we'll move forward with it. Old Business, Atlantic Broadband Agreement.
I sent an email to them with the changes recommended by the attorney. They replied on the 6th just saying, thank you for forwarding it and they will review it and get back to us.
Okay.
So unless you tell me otherwise, that will stay on Old Business too until they get back to you on a response.
Purchasing Policy.
Treasurer gave you a purchasing policy last week. One of the suggested changes from the chair, which we removed, did say that, that for all purchases of goods or services between five and 5,000, department heads are required to solicit no less than three competitive prices in writing. It said in writing or verbal. She asked that the verbal be taken out, so we took that out. And a minor change in the emergency purchases, in the event of a purchase, in the event a purchase is a result of an unforeseen emergency, the department head shall provide a receipt and written explanation to the town administrator within one business day. Every attempt should be made to obtain verbal authorization from the town administrator, or this is the new part, or board of selectmen liaison prior to purchase. We wanted to give them two options, could it be a Saturday or Sunday if it's an emergency? Other than that, there's no changes.
Okay.
And FEMA is coming back on Sunday.
We'll table that for one more week so I can look at it a little bit more.
Sure, absolutely.
Do you want this copy?
He can, that's what the changes, you can have it.
Annual Town Meeting, Warrant Recommendations.
So a couple of things I want to go over with you. Per your OK, we added an article. Article 77's been added to see if the town will vote to appropriate $13,419 from the REC Capital Improvement Fund for expenses to purchase and erect a flagpole and have electricity and security lighting installed at the town of Acton rec fields. This is a document that we prepared for Warren Finance tonight. It has a breakdown of the flagpole expenses, the electricity installation and security lighting. There is a note on there. The electrician wanted to make sure that it was very clear that he's putting floodlights on the pole and essentially it's going to add some light should they be wrapping up a quick game. But this is not designed for night games or to bring the field into any type of Little League standards because he says that would, that would require an engineering plan and that changes everything. So I'm not sure if anybody's staying for the Warren Finance, but this is a breakdown and that article is on there, per your OK to Michelle. Which brings us to the warrants. I know that Ed, I typed in the recommendations that you guys had on there. A good question that I kind of came up when I was speaking with Mr. Williams today. I mean, you guys wrote this art, this warrant, this is your warrant, you wrote these, these numbers come, came from you. Unless there's discussion or objection, you could vote on them collectively with the, I know that Ed wanted to speak on Article 34. And the only other article that I thought might bring discussion, it may or may not, are some of the road issues. So I don't know how you feel about that, how you want to handle it. You left off on Article 26.
Six.
Yep, you did, yep, so 26 and 20.
A.
A and B are Flat Ground Road. 27 is Municipal Government. Do you want to just go through them and if there's discussion to be had, you can, we'll pause and.
Okay.
If not, if there's no discussion, we'll assume you support it as written and then somebody can make a motion in the end visually. Health and Welfare, Capital Improvement Fund, the $5,000. The Generator.
Yep.
Fire Rescue Department for their wages, $613,000. The SCBA PAC. And the next one is the Capital Improvement Truck Fund, $5,000. Does somebody want to make a motion for 26A through 33?
I, oh, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I'll, yeah, I'll give the chair, she'll do it. I'll make a motion that we approve, we recommend Article, let me get this right, 26A through 33 as written. Does that work? Is that the right, yeah?
That's, yeah, correct.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
All right, so that will be 33. And I know there wanted to be some discussion. Article 34, see if the town will authorize the selectmen to withdraw and spend up to $70,000 for the purchase of a fire utility truck from the Fire Department Capital Improve Truck Fund.
Yeah, I wanted to discuss this a little bit further. The fire chief in all his presentations, he started, well, he started out at 85,000, I believe. We've got it down to 70. In his discussions with both us and Warren Finance, to take it to 70 would be quite a hit to his budget to try to, try to come up with the money. He's not going to get back to 85, but he feels that if he could get that up closer to the 75 mark, his budget will take a lesser hit in trying to outfit the truck with what it needs, the way he originally presented it. So I just wanted to bring it up to see if we would, speaking of Fire Department. To see if we would want to reconsider, to see if we'd want to reconsider the possibility of moving it closer to the 75 mark. Because he doesn't have to send, spend the 75, but that would bring it up to, because any, any amount of money he's going to spend above that, it's going to have to come out of his budget to, with the emergency lights, the radio. He's not going to put the plow on it. That's not going to happen right now. That would be, if, that would come back to us and the Warren Finance in years to come if he wants to do that. I'm not convinced that's a necessary evil, but, so I just want to open it up to see what you think.
I'm sticking with 70,000.
Okay.
I just, I think he can do it. You know, we did some, not we, Jennifer did some research and stuff and I just, I, I.
Per the board's request.
Yes, you know, we asked her and.
I was on that request too. I was positive in that, yeah.
You know, and I just.
And, and just for that, I mean, I want to remind you that the Warren Finance has already made.
Oh, I realize.
A recommendation. So if you change it, we go back to Warren Finance as well.
We go back to Warren Finance, I realize that.
Nope, that's fine, I just want to be sure.
Yep, nope, I just wanted to bring it back for discussion. I mean, it's the first opportunity that I've had to bring it back up because we're just now getting to it.
I mean, he did, he did a great job presenting.
Yep.
I mean, he really did and stuff, but I just, it's a lot of money.
It is a lot, it is a lot of money, that's for sure.
You know.
Yeah.
I think what's holding me back from going up to the 75 is the, is the, the finding of the amount of money it was going to take to have it delivered. And I don't, I don't think we need to pay that kind of money to have it delivered.
I agree.
Shipping of the bed.
And right there, that would have been, that was close to, you said shipping?
The shipping of the bed was about 2,500.
And I feel like that was, you know, he was getting numbers from just one place and that we could come in pretty close to the 70 without him breaking the bank with the rest of his budget.
Right.
So motion on 34 is?
Leave it.
Kim can do it.
So I guess I'll make a motion to accept Article 34 as written.
I have to second that.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I'm not opposed to it, I'm just.
No.
Any further discussion? I mean, I'm not, I think it's great, this, this truck, I have to remember, he kept telling me, is replacing two trucks.
Two trucks, yep.
And it will last 20 years. And that's why I was close to moving to the 75 like he requested. He did a great presentation, but when I saw that delivery fee, I thought, no way. That's half of, half of it. We can find the other half in there, whether it's a good, a good deal from the dealerships or the guys making the bed. It's going to work. So, all in favor?
Does the board of selectmen want to, do they have any reservations or concerns with the road articles? You, I know that the conversation about meeting with one and not the other has come up. Does, do you have reservations on the amounts?[1573.37] Does, do you have reservations on the amounts? Are you comfortable with them, the way they've moved forward? Do you want to take more time to look at them? Like to go to forty-two if we could, which essentially is the APAT, which is the increase that you approved, REC, which you approved, the only thing on the roads. And it's not that they're higher than you requested. Just know there was some conversation about them.
Um, should we go, should we start? What are we on here?
So we're at thirty.
So thirty-five.
Yep.
And thirty-six.
Okay.
Thirty-seven.
Okay.
What's thirty-seven?
Thirty-seven is the REC.
Okay, so why don't, I think it's safe to vote on, to accept thirty-five, six and seven as written.
Second.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
All right, so that brings us to thirty-seven.
Or thirty-eight.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven. So thirty-eight is to see if the town will vote to pay wages and equipment for repair and maintenance of public ways according to the following schedule. We increased a lot of these lines by up to twenty percent last year. Some were less than twenty. Some were up to twenty-two, I think. But they hadn't been increased in several years, so we felt they would do to be increased. However, on the town floor, we had an issue with, did we take that out?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, not an issue.
Okay.
Um, do we have, I mean, the only thing different this year were they split out a truck between three different categories of cubic yards, which is good to do. We have a motion for article thirty-eight.
Make a motion, we approve thirty-eight as written.
I'll second that.
All in favor. Okay, so article thirty-nine talks about district, District One roads for winters, winter maintenance, summer maintenance, road surfacing reconstruction. None of these numbers have increased. Correct? Last year they increased again, I think by ten percent. Again, they hadn't been increased in a couple of years. They would do that.
Ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion.
Make a motion, we approve article thirty-nine, forty and forty-one. Is that what we're doing?
I'd, I would like to hold off on forty-one.
Okay, thirty-nine and forty.
I'll second that.
All in favor.
So you want to stop there?
Yeah, okay. I think we should discuss our article forty-one. I don't think that should have.
Do we think that we can get through, most of them are the social services. Can you review the last of them before the next meeting so we can finish it up next week?
Yeah, sure.
Think that's okay?
I feel like this was supposed to be after forty hours.
Yes.
Excuse me?
I thought this was supposed to be after forty hours.
Thirty-nine and forty were approved as written.
Oh, it is in there. I'm sorry. I'm going to have to take it.
Nope, no, no. No, the overtime after eight hours, it shouldn't be in there.
It is.
Well, see, it is. That's why I'm just.
No, no, what we, what you took.
Oh, holidays.
Holidays, right.
Okay.
That stays the same. It was after eight hours you want to remove, right? Or do you want to make a change?
Yeah. No, okay. I just wanted to make sure it was written right.
But remember, that wasn't in the article last year. That was allowed at town floor, so.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, it's a whole other discussion that you need to.
All righty.
All right, so moving on, we'll, we'll do forty-one, do the rest next week.
Okay.
I didn't, okay, so downstairs office.
I'm going to table that until next week. We're still working on budget lines.
Candidates' night, oh, date changed.
So they changed Candidates' Night to Wednesday, May twenty-third at seven-thirty. And they're hoping it will follow the special town meeting that's scheduled at seven o'clock. And I did provide a list to the people hosting it, so hopefully they've reached out to the candidates.
They have not.
Okay, well, I trust they will soon.
Not yet.
Well, I shouldn't say that. I, I can give you a copy of the flyer. I'm not trusting anything anymore. I, I mean, and I say that I can't, I don't, I'm not going to speak for what somebody else will do.
When's, I mean, Odyssey of the Mind, OM, right?
OM. So they are, they needed twelve thousand dollars. They originally wanted fifteen, but they decided to drive and sort of fly, so now they only needed twelve. They're currently at eleven thousand, eighty-eight dollars. So they are hoping their last fundraiser, which is the spaghetti dinner on Friday, May eleventh, from five-thirty to seven, puts them over the edge. So I'm going to have your pasta.
And any extra funds that they, they do make gets rolled over into the next year's Odyssey of the Mind team. They send a team almost every year to world, so there'll be more fundraisers for another team. So don't feel like you have to, you know, underpay at the spaghetti dinner because they, that money will roll over and you'll be asked again next year. Congratiate, congratulations Odyssey team and good luck. Special Town Meeting Recommendations, Warrant.
So I need you to make a recommendation on the overdraft to approve the article as written or to not. And originally I was thinking that I wanted to have you sign the warrant, but because Warren Finance hasn't made a recommendation, now that we have a Friday night meeting, I'm going to ask you to make your recommendation tonight on the article. They'll make their recommendation tonight on the article. I'll present it to you Friday to be signed and we should, we will still make the posting requirements for the twenty-third.
Great.
So Michelle sent you a copy of all of the.
Yeah.
Numbers?
Yep.
I mean, it is what it is.
Yeah.
I thought I had the warrant. Do you have the specials on the warrant?
Mr. Reed, you want one of our copies?
Do you have it right there? Because if not, I can find it in my email.
I sure do.
I thought I printed it, but it was a pretty busy hour.
Do you want me to give you three of them?
No, they just need to read the article. I mean, they wrote the article. They've already seen it. They just need to read the, thank you.
Thank you.
So just a recommendation that we can type and then we'll sign it on Friday.
In the name of the state of Maine, you are hereby requested to notify and warn the inhabitants of said Town of Acton qualified to vote in town affairs to assemble at the Acton Town Hall on May twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, at seven o'clock in the evening to act on the following articles to wit. Article one, to choose a moderator for said meeting. Article two, to see if the town will vote to ratify the overdraft of the winter maintenance road accounts in the amount of one hundred, eight thousand, seventy-four dollars and eighty-two cents from the undesignated fund. The breakdown of the overdraft, District One plowing, twenty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents. District Two plowing, thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty-three cents. Sand stockpile, sorry, sand salt stockpile, forty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
Make a motion, we accept it, approve it as written.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? I'm hoping to avoid this next year somehow, but.
Seems like every year we go over and every year we've increased the budget.
Yeah. I, yeah, okay. So all in favor? And I don't sign this.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Williams.
That's the breakdown.
What was the?
What time did we decide the meeting was on Friday?
Four.
Four.
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's okay, I'm all set.
Yeah. Non-zero tax balances.
So now that the second payment has come and gone, I have a printout of all the seventeen taxes. Although we adjust the date a day or two within the legal laws, there's always dwindlers. So we have eighteen accounts that have less than a dollar balance and I have nineteen accounts less than a five-dollar balance. So I'm looking for some instruction on what you want to authorize to be written off and what you want letters sent to before we start the lien process.
What's that total, what's it totaled to?
No, no, nineteen accounts that have less than five dollars. I didn't total them, to be honest with you. I mean, worst case, you could do the math his way. You want to look at them, but. I would recommend, if I can, to write off less than a dollar and at least try to send the letter. I mean, we don't want people to get in the habit of, you know what I mean? Forty-eight cents to send a letter to.
No.
Some of them are three.
Yeah, it doesn't work for a dollar.
Envelope and a stamp, no.
No, but I mean the five-dollar ones. Because I don't want people just to start shorting their tax counts knowing that, you know. So a letter might be worthy on the five-dollar ones, but write off the dollars.
Yeah, I'd make a motion, we write off the dollar.
Anything less than a dollar and the rest we'll send with our reminder letters.
One dollar or less.
Yes, sir.
Public comment. Announcements. The Board of Selectmen have their office hours, the second and third Thursday this month. We just had our first one from seven to eight. Spaghetti dinner this Saturday, right? Was it Saturday?
Friday.
Friday night. Oh, right after a meeting. May eleventh.
Yeah, probably. Well, we'd probably be meeting downstairs.
Yeah.
May eleventh, five-thirty to seven, five-dollar donation to support the Odyssey of the Mind team. May fifteenth, public hearing on the marijuana ordinance is still happening, seven o'clock. May seventeenth, Acton Planning Board Public Hearing is at seven PM. And now May twenty-third, Candidates' Night at seven-thirty. Board of Selectmen meet during the month of May on the fifteenth, the twenty-second, the twenty-ninth at five. Forest Conservation Committee, seven o'clock on the fourteenth of May. Planning Board on the seventeenth at seven. Recreational Committee on the seventeenth at seven. Cemetery Committee on the twenty-fourth at five. And I wanted to mention that the library is hosting, along with AWI and the Gaffney Library, a presentation on loons at the Wakefield Opera House on May twenty-third at, from two to four. Those flyers up if you want more information on that. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?